All right.
Hey, just to clarify, do you know I only got a new member singing their high school play song?
I thought, I thought it was more of the most, most frequently given cheer, like defense, defense.
Probably Jimmy Brothers.
Yeah. And then there's the carry, secret karaoke night initiation process.
Oh.
Jim does, Jim does Sharp Dress Man from ZZ Top, so. Yes, she.
She won't be able to make it.
Both of them are.
Kevin was supposed to. You're a surprise guest.
I am?
Yeah, you said you weren't gonna make it, I thought.
He's, he's missed, he's been very diligent.
Okay, maybe that's what it was, okay. Payback, that's right. Payback.
For that. Oh my goodness. All right, all right. Welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for Monday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Tiffany, roll call please.
Jim Craig.
Here.
Kevin Neef. Jessica Bullerman. Lisa Jepson.
Here.
Kenny Jones.
Here.
Sheri Monahan. Jim Langmo.
Here.
All right, Pat, uh, before we do approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, I believe she got it accurately put together.
Well, she is awesome.
We did put it in order of, uh, numbering, so we'll start with sixty-three. I obviously had a pen full up, so I'm not gonna be taking minutes today.
All right.
I will loan you mine.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
But the, uh, agenda is.
As, okay, I'll sort this out. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
So move, Jim.
I'll start then.
Thank you, Kenny. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Item number three, approval of the August twenty eight, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Do you need a moment to take a look at those, or are we feeling like we could have a motion to approve? All right, Jim has moved to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jim Langmo, Jim and Jim, it was Team Jim.
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, Community Development Director's Report. Pat, what do we need to know?
Well, we, uh, made some comments before the meeting started, especially referring to one hundred voices. They are moving down the road rather, rather fast, hoping to, uh, let some of the first units before the end of the year. Other than that, we haven't had a lot of, uh, stuff moved forward from your commission.
Any questions for Pat about past projects? Hearing none, let's move on to number five. Consider resolution for recommendation to city council to appro- approve an ordinance amending the City Housing Code, Chapter one six three. So, um, we typically have a motion to approve and second, that does not mean that we are making our vote at that time. We'll have the motion to approve the resolution, and then we'll have discussion. This is where we grill Pat mercilessly for everyone who is new. Okay, may I have a motion to, uh, approve the resolution?
I'll move.
Kenny has moved, may I have a second? Thank you, Jim Craig, appreciate that. All right, now.
How's it going?
I know, I know, he was trying, he had, he had to leaf through seven inches of paper in order to get to where he needed to be. All right.
It is, it is a little bit difficult, but this is actually the simplest of all of them.
Okay, very good, very good. Starting, you're starting us off with a warm-up. Excellent, excellent. All right. Pat, tell us what we need, can you kind of frame this in the, we have a lot of different items in front of us with different, you know, slightly different language all throughout, so is the tone of the evening to really bring Hiawatha into, uh, some similar zoning and similar restrictions as have recently been changed at the state level? Is that correct?
That is essentially correct.
Overall, yeah.
Overall, what we've done is we looked at the, the new legislation, in this particular case, a lot of it had to do with, uh, home businesses and daycares, a lot of changes. And we also looked at existing ordinance or statutes that the state has that are referenced in our code, but that our language did not accurately reflect. So there are a few of those, uh, catch-ups as well. But overall, it's mostly a coordination effort between us and the state, and not doing, uh, repetitious language if we can avoid it. That we'll notice as we move forward into, uh, one sixteen-four and one sixty-five. Uh, one sixty-three is just a definition change that had to occur as a result of what happens in one sixty-five for short-term rentals. Uh, short-term rentals, uh, hit the legislature, and they lobbied to not allow, uh, local jurisdictions to regulate them or to find fee them for licensure. And so we're making sure that our rental housing code is strictly for long-term rentals. And that definition is in, uh, compliance with what the state considers short-term rentals, which is thirty days or less. So the first one is very simple. Uh, we are regulating rentals only long-term rentals. And basically clarified that.
I don't mean we don't, but why do we care?
Well.
Why is there a rule on what's short-term and long-term?
Right. There, the, the, there is a rule, and we do care because we have short-term rentals in Hiawatha. Uh, sometimes known as bed breakfast, sometimes known as, uh, vacation homes for.
So this is a verbo Airbnb now, right?
Airbnb, that's what they're for. The other thing that this is going to affect eventually, if we do accessory dwellings. Uh, if we do accessory, you know, auxiliary dwellings, we want to make sure we're using the same language for that as we're using here, and that again will be only for long-term situations.
Are the standards different?
Um.
Regulation different?
The only difference that I know of is that short-term rentals are not regulated, they are viewed as the same use as a one and two-bedroom dwelling. So in the state's eyes, whether you live there or whether you let someone else live there for a week or two, it's gonna be the same standard as that. Whereas in a long-term rental situation, we do have a little more authority, uh, to regulate the landlords and how they are treating property as, as they, as it becomes a business.
Are we allowed to inspect them, that too, is that what you mean?
We, we are allowed to inspect the long-term rentals, but because of this, we're not, because the state said we can't regulate the short-term any different than we would for a one and two-bedroom dwelling. So what they're saying is in the short-term rental is that it looks so much like a single-bedroom dwelling, the city does not have a vested interest for going in and saying, you can't rent it short, you have to get a license to do it, um, even though it only looks like a single-bedroom dwelling. So if somebody were to do a short-term rental and it did not comply, in other words, they use it as a parking lot, or they, they have extra events there that create extra traffic in the neighborhood, extra noise in the neighborhood, those standards still apply just as though we're a single-bedroom. And that's how we would regulate the short-term.
Move approval.
So in some ways to me, Pat, this seems a little backwards. I think I would much rather live next to a house that one person is renting for two or three months or a year than live next to one where every two or three days, new people come, you know, through, sort of thing. But, but that doesn't cha-, yeah, that doesn't change my, you know, view of what we're doing and why we're doing it, but I've just, just stating it to me and that, and almost seems a little backwards, right?
I can, I can assume that they have strong lobby that's.
Right, right, it's the verbal lobby that's.
And, and the other part that's, that I empathize with is if you have large events, assuming you have a super bowl.
Mm-hmm.
This occurs, and you really have no way of.
Right.
That they're in and out, gone.
Right.
You really don't.
The recourse isn't, just isn't built into the system for, for a weekend rental.
The ones you're going to regulate are the ones that, that are, you know, lobbying, the rest of them are gonna happen.
Right.
So in all fairness, I think it's, it's not enforceable in many respects to do short-term rentals.
Right. Then you're basically just back to whatever the noise ordinances are, you're kind of back to a police matter almost of, you know, noise ordinances or parking, you know, too much parking, and, yeah. All right, other questions? Do we feel comfortable taking a vote? Okay, Tiffany?
I move approval.
Well, we're, I think we're good, because we did that.
Oh.
I think we're, we're down to a roll call. Yes, I, no, don't do that, Jim. I have a special list.
Me too.
Don't let Jim take us, Tiffany and I have a list. All right, Tiffany?
Uh, Jessica Bullerman.
You can say aye if you approve.
Aye.
Yep.
Jim Craig.
Aye.
Kenny Jones.
Aye.
Lisa Jepson.
Aye.
Jim Langmo.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Business number five, Part B. Consider resolution for recommendation to city council to approve an ordinance amending the City Property Maintenance Code, Chapter one six four. Again, may I have a motion to approve before the discussion? Motion to approve? Jim, this is a good time for you.
Uh, I move to approve.
Thank you, Jim, Jim Craig. All right, and a second?
Other.
Kenny, thank you. All right, Pat, what is going on with Chapter one six four?
Well, Chapter one sixty-four is my fault. This is, this is a chapter that we were in the process of creating our vacant building code.
Uh-huh.
And in the midst of that process, Chapter one sixty-four was rewritten.
Good.
When we finalized the vacant building ordinance, I may have left it to use the new one sixty-four. So as a result, the old one sixty-four was readapted to the vacant building code.
Okay.
So in, in reality, because they were both valid ordinances, it could be considered a scripter's error. However, the city clerk, uh, said, we might clarify this, make sure there's no question about which ordinance we had. So she recommended that we go ahead and re-pass the, the one sixty-four amended for the twenty twenty-one, uh, international code recognition. It, we have been, believe it or not, enforcing the twenty twenty-one, even though it said twenty eighteen, and did not recognize that it only said twenty eighteen until our new, quote-unquote, officer came into my office and said, we're not enforcing the twenty twenty-one.
So brownie points for attention to detail.
He get, uh, definitely works in his favor.
All right.
So with that recognition, we are moving it back to the correct language, using the twenty twenty-one international, um, property maintenance code as a reference to Chapter one sixty-four.
All right.
Well, this one here is the one that, for vacant properties, right?
Uh, the, actually, no, we, we already included the vacant properties. So the vacant property language is probably the only part that's not changing, because it was the same as we needed to do it. We just had put it in the wrong spot. If we had adopted, left the one sixty-four the way it was supposed to. So I had written the vacant building code to match both one sixty-fours, but I picked the wrong one when I checked it to council.
Okay, um, what are we doing with the vacant buildings?
Right now, we are trying to get enough personnel on hand to be able to move forward with those. We have, um, we have two properties ready for putting them on the list for licensure as vacant buildings. One was on Robbins, the Gandor. Glad, how do you say that?
The Landor.
Glandor, the Glandor Building. But they have since, uh, picked up the pace, have rejuvenated that building. So now we're looking at, there's a property over here on Marion that needs to be listed and probably removed. And then, of course, we've got a demolition project that has been extended to on, on Robbins, which I think that's gonna qualify for a dangerous building.
Think there are another one, not duplex on Fourth Avenue?
I have heard that there's another one over there, but I don't, I don't have that on my list yet.
Okay, I think it's a duplex.
Okay. So if you know of an empty building, those would be the ones that we're gonna start implementing. So we should, we should continue with that implementation as we put our, our next step.
This almost, if you look at the red line, that's what we had.
Almost.
So did the international code change that dramatically?
But the international code didn't change, what we did is, at the time of that adoption for the twenty twenty-one, is instead of amending the living daylights out of the model code, we reduced the amendments based on language that was already in the model code. So our adoption processes have been streamlined because we've been able to use the language that's in the model codes. So that's why it looks like we're losing a lot of it. If you look at it real close, the red is stuff that's changed, either eliminated or added, and the green is simply stuff that's moved to a different location. So when we did the adoption, it looked like we had completely gutted the, we, we did gut our amendments, but we did not change the code significantly. So it's much easier to follow when it comes time to enforce them.
Oh, I mean, green in this one.
No green?
Yeah. You talked about some of the other ones that.
Well, this one has green, definitely. This would be the actual, um, adoption, should be the actual resolution itself.
Oh, it's not, but okay, I'll take the report. Maybe it's my copy machine, I don't.
Do you have the green one, Jim?
If you ask me, no.
That, Jim.
Mr. Fisher.
No, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher.
When he works.
Uh, no.
I might have a gray. I mean, I just didn't, just noting.
This is, this is the actual ordinance that we have, Jim, and you're gonna be, you know, we adopted back in.
A lot of green.
Yeah. So when we adopted it back in with ordinance, twenty twenty-two, that's what, that's exactly what it looked like in twenty twenty-two when we adopted it.
So Pat, if I can, uh, go big picture here, am I hearing that we have, we have seen this before?
Yes.
In twenty twenty-two?
In twenty twenty-two.
And there were changes and moving things that occurred in conjunction with the changes to clean up the vacant building actual code.
That's, that's.
So we've seen it before, it's really just a, and I have done this myself, right? You, you get the final version and you put it in with the other stuff, only you grabbed the wrong stack or the wrong version, right? Like, that's all it is. So there's nothing that is showing up here that we haven't actually already previously approved. But we need to dot our i's and cross our t's. And it makes me feel a little better because I have done this myself, and so now I know if Pat does it, it's just gonna happen. It just happens, right?
I tried.
So from, from that perspective, it, it seems like now is actually not the time to identify recommended language adjustment, because then we would be making substantive modifications for the first time since it was previously approved. So if that is the, if that is the framing, are we feeling comfortable with a vote to approve?
That's my turn.
Okay, so, okay, no, no, we're good, okay, roll call please. Roll call. That's a fair point, Jim. Yeah, no, that's a fair point.
Jim Langmo. Lisa Jepson.
Aye.
Jessica Bullerman.
Aye.
Jim Craig.
Aye.
Kenny Jones.
Aye.
Fair point. All right, motion carries.
Sorry, but you do that.
No, no, we've all done it. Oh my goodness, we've all done it. Just be glad you didn't grab the wrong exam and then give it to your students, because that, that can happen. Everybody, by the way, every teacher has, has at one point in time had the answer key on the last page and submitted it for photocopying. And so the students are going, I get the last page, it's like, oh, there's all the answers, so it happens. It happens. That was pretty painless compared to what could happen. All my.
Right, that's what I was thinking, that never happened.
You're gonna want to take my classes then. All right, cool. All right, item C, consider resolution for recommendation to city council to approve an ordinance amending the City Unified Development Code, Chapter one six five. Pat, tell us about Chapter one six five.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Tiffany's on the motion, Jim Langmo's, uh, that's motion to approve, Jim Langmo, second. Kenny, thank you, thank you, good job, Tiffany. All right, Pat, what do we need to know about one sixty-five?
Well, Chapter one sixty-five was really what precipitated all of these changes.
Okay.
Uh, knowing that we had to change things for, uh, home occupancies, the state had relapsed rules for, uh, they call it no impact home occupancies. They also changed the rules for, um, childcare, charter, uh, home daycares. And our codes were off by one or two children to start with. Then when the final rules came out, they actually have rules that allow for sixteen children versus eleven, which is where we started. So what we've done is we've taken each one of those individual places that are, are affected in our code. If you look at the ordinance, starting at one sixty-five, point one six, point one seven, that change is a very simple change. If you want to go through these, I can go one at a time. You can divide the question and choose to pass each one of these separately. They're all incompatible with each other. Or you could pass them all together as the resolution is that you have. So you have to move to divide the question if you wanna pick one out. I can explain all of them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Pat, would you be comfortable if you could explain them in order, and then we'll hold that vote until the end?
Yep. So the first one is the, uh, Center Point Road design. In conjunction with our new vision for the Center Point Road, it no longer makes sense not to allow buildings to be taller. That we were, we did approve a project that was, I think, seven stories at one point, in our Center Point Road one. And because it's meant to be so compact, that language should be removed. It's, it's not part of what we've been doing as a matter of policy. So far, we have not denied anybody any, and so there's been no, uh, it's not retracting it for, for a project that's already been done or anything like that. This way, we're ahead of it, if somebody does go ahead, it matches what our intent is. Second change, one sixty-five, point two five, has to do with the residential daycare, which we talked about. The first change is from, it moves the standard from, to allow, to require licensure at six children instead of five. Not a big change, but according to the state, somebody could open a child daycare without any licensure and have up to six children, whereas in the past, six children would require licensure. So what we wanted to do is match our conditional use permit to that number. So if somebody's unlicensed by the state, they'll also be unlicensed by the city in Hiawatha. If, once they require a license by the state, then they're required to get a conditional use by the city, and that would be, that matches then at six children.
Unless they have five, they don't have to be.
That's correct. Whereas right now, if they get languages over five, the new language will be over six. So I have it wrong, it's actually the seventh child triggers the licensure, whereas right now, it's the sixth child. Uh, we, I don't know how we would pick up on these if they don't get state licenses.
Plus, it seems really confusing to the folks that are trying to do these very small businesses to have such a close approximation of the rules, but a little deviation.
Right.
But Pat, am I correct that cities are allowed to be more restrictive?
We could.
But it seems like it just create, would cre-, I mean, it seems like it would just create a little bit of extra confusion. Is there that much of a difference? And if we want to support small businesses, then being m- more, uh, aligned seems to be clearer and more helpful to someone who's starting a, a small business or maintaining a small business, a very small business.
The advantage that we have in coinciding with the state licensure is that the inspection process is a state process now.
Oh, nice, yeah. That's a good point.
Rather than having two different standards for that process, it's much more, well, it's less confusing, you know, it's more, uh, enforcement-friendly if it is the same, that you can adjust the licensure requirements. And then we use that licensure requirement as part of our acceptance of that daycare. If you look at the language moving on to C in that same section, it talks about accepting the language in the Human Services Department, Section four four one, Chapter one eleven, Family Law, which is very explicit language in terms of how many children and what they need to provide at their licensed daycare for eight children, twelve children, or sixteen children. So that's this document that was in your package. The document includes footnotes which talk about, um, what age children are allowed and how many people have to be present for the daycare, and how many of the residents' children qualify, and what is the age of the people attending the children, and does the licensed daycare provider have to be one of the people at the daycare. So all of those rules are contained in the state, and instead of us rewriting them, which we did in the past, that's what the language that it's stricting is, we would just pick up their language right out of their rules.
Do you know why they went from twelve to sixteen? That's a twenty-five percent increase.
Why?
Yeah.
I can, I could surmise there's a shortage of daycares.
Particularly in rural areas, the daycare deserts, they're trying to, rather, I think they think that it's much, uh, harder to get new people to open up new businesses than it is to take the existing businesses and allow them to care for more children.
Now, there, there are square footage requirements, so not all residential.
But that's a home occupation, so they can have sixteen people dropping off kids and.
That it would be in their home, and yes, they, there would be certain time of day in which there will be traffic.
Yeah, Central Station.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, could be.
Yeah.
Is it any, is it any more than twelve? Is it, I think it's more intense though, twelve? Uh, I don't, we haven't had any complaints on the daycare drop-off portion. Um, we did have a concern about a screening issue, but that isn't, that hasn't changed, and that wouldn't, that's not gonna be any different.
So they impose a square footage requirement if you have sixteen versus twelve?
Yes, they do.
Didn't they change the number of providers that's required for sixteen versus twelve?
I believe they still allow two provide, they require two providers, and I think they both have to be present for sixteen. So I'd have to, so the details of how they're provided are written right into their rules. And they did create classes, so you have home occupancy, A, B, C, C one and C two. The, it is an option for you to choose to only go as far as A and B and C two, which is the minimum. The maximum is twelve, but we're not allowed for the C. No, that would be the, excuse me, C one provider would be allowed, C two provider would not be allowed. So there's one provider at A, two providers at N, sixteen.
It does look like too that they do have to have a greater experience threshold for the people who are doing the supervision and slightly older minimum age of caregiver, compared to.
I thought that was interesting.
Twelve to sixteen.
The regulations that they put in play for education and the, uh, and natural providers.
Yep.
And they also regulate how many of each age.
So Pat, if we were to, I, I don't think anybody's super enamored with the idea of your house next door having sixteen children in daycare. However, if we were to say, no, we are not comfortable making that amendment, would the city have to enforce the diff- the, then do we, we would lose kind of that continuity with the state, right?
We have to be on the lookout for what's in the middle.
Right, we would be.
What, what would happen is, as soon as they're required to be, to have a license, they would, they're required to come to us to get our conditional use. they would, they're required to come to us to get our conditional use.
But they might not even realize it because it would be us only and not the state?
No, no, that's not true.
No, that's not true, okay.
We would not be regulating any that the state was not already regulated. So as soon as they have a state, as soon as they're state regulated, they have to come to us.
Okay, got it. It's the type of regulation, it's not a yes/no regulation, it's the type of regulation.
That's it, so that was number, that was changing the number of students from five to six.
Yep.
But I mean, if they had, if they had 12s, they gotta have a certain square footage. Cause that would stop somebody from, in the house, to do this.
Um, well, if it's a big enough house, now...
Well, yeah, that'd be huge.
I'm not, I don't know what the square footage requirements are, but, uh, there are evidently some homes that will handle 16, because they're considered, they're considering them home daycares. What would happen is if you don't choose the 16, then when they come in for their conditional use, the max we would allow is 12, even if they're licensed for 16.
So you have happy neighbors and mad parents.
I'm curious, was there anything to be asked for that, or we're just trying to dwell on?
We, we discovered at Cedar Rapids and Marion did the same thing. When we discovered the five, six issue at the bottom, it became a real issue because they're watching these quite closely, their, their permit process. They were not, they had a lot of daycares going in all of a sudden without contacting the city, with the reasoning that they didn't need the state, so their assumption was they didn't need the city license. Which, I mean, that's reasonable, all of a sudden not even for your daycare and six kids and not bothering with anybody. And that, and that's what was happening. So they've been working at trying to get theirs aligned, at least up in Lower East End. I do not, I do not know that they put any kind of a regulation at the top, other than following the state standard. They are adopting the state standard language, so I'm making an assumption that they're, as soon as they're licensed, they're following what the state is allowing. That's an assumption. Because I, I, go ahead.
We haven't had anything to be...
We have our latest request. Um, we did, you remember this, did they go to the Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment did allow it up to 12, and they also weighed in on the recommendation that it go to 16. Yeah, I think I put that in my memo, they, I asked them, cause I didn't know whether they would wanna try to broach that issue at the time. And it was close, I mean, it was, it was close. Not all of them agreed that it would be 16.
Something like that, can we make our planning and zoning director responsible for placing the homes with 16 kids?
So Pat, one, one last, like, before naptime.
Sure.
One, yeah.
I will do it in July and July.
Before snaptime.
There you go.
So, um, Pat, what if, so our neighborhood no longer has restricted covenants that are active, but when they were first initiated, they prohibited home businesses, including they explicitly including daycares to be prohibited. Does a restricted covenant in an HOA, is that allow, I guess this is a legal question, but it's a legal question, isn't it?
I'll weigh in.
Okay.
HOAs are, and they are facing a lot of losses.
Yeah, it, cause in HOA, I, I mean, we used to have, I've seen the language.
Yeah.
And yet it didn't, and we had somebody down the street who was doing home visits, but probably under the limit where any, uh, regulation would kick in, and that's when the HOA thing really comes into play.
Sure.
Yeah. Ken?
Do we have a, a motion on this part of it, or?
Well, we're gonna see if we can make it all the way through, and if we can't, we'll have to move to bifurcate.
What I do is, I'll go all the way through 165, and if you wanna pick one out, you can write the question.
Right.
Okay, just trying to follow where we are.
Yep, yep.
So I just cut to the daycare, home occupation, 165.26 is the next, next section. This is truly a coordination issue, but it does have ramifications for us as a city. In the past, we did not allow home occupancies that had any retail.
Okay, so we're probably, Jim, we're probably on the next, I think we're on the next page.
Yeah, 126. Yeah, the next page.
Yep. So, number, number one is five to six, number two is 12 to 16, and I think we need to see the next page to see the... Oh, okay, okay. Alright.
It's the rest of the ordinance.
165, is there, is there something under the page? Yeah.
Draft ordinance 164, excuse me, 165.
So turn to the next, this ordinance should be pretty long.
The one that starts short term, I'll open it up. That's for 150, 65, 66.
No, that's my memo, this is the...
Do you need me to come look, Jim?
I think you want the actual ordinance, I'm here to go if you want it. I might have it.
Should be in there, printed on both the same.
The right language, my ordinance, my memo does have it, unfortunately, it's not in the right order. It was written out of...
Yes, he does.
In that order, and that is for ordinance 165.
Nope, that's the same, there we go. Yeah, there we go, thank you. Alright, so Pat, home occupancy, what's going on?
Uh, there's been a, a real, uh, push at the legislature for them to limit what cities can regulate in home occupations. Uh, in the entrepreneurial spirit of things, low impact or no impact home occupancies are to be allowed. We really didn't have a lot of home occupancies that we didn't allow, but we did have some language that said, um, if you were a attorney or a doctor, you couldn't have a home occupancy. Don't know why, other than...
They're shifty.
It didn't look like it should be. So what we did is we concentrated on the standards for what a home occupancy would look like and not impact the neighborhood. So we went through items A through J, K, L, and looked at them to make sure that they controlled traffic, controlled parking, noise, um, the amount of visitors, and then also included licensure requirements for the various, um, home occupancies. There was a point in Hiawatha where a beauty salon wasn't allowed its own occupancy, taxi cab driving service wasn't allowed, name specifically. Uh, there may have been incidents somewhere, but we are taking all of those specifics out, going with the general standard. Since we don't issue home occupancy permits anyway, we will enforce the home occupancies just like we're doing today, basically by complaint action. If somebody is foot to the yard sign out, or if they have too much traffic, then we would monitor them and say, okay, you're not complying with the home occupancy requirement, go get a business.
Okay.
Move it to business. That does mean, though, that somebody could raise their own vegetables and sell them at their lodge as a no impact business. It could also mean that, of course, they can't, they can't have chickens yet, but if they had chickens...
Pat's hopes remain, maintain.
You know what's interesting about home occupancies right now is, we have a lot of them out there that nobody even knows they exist, except for the traffic of the Amazon truck.
Gotcha.
And then the people coming to get it. And of course, if it's, uh, black market stuff, you know, it just, it's there, it's part of the neighborhood already. I don't think, in my opinion, that this is going to impact what we do, except that it does clarify that we really regulate home occupancies based on what they look like and how they act. Are they good neighbors or not?
And, and based on the changes that you've described to us before, that's gonna have to match with what, in some of these areas, cause there are some daycare references, that's gonna have to match, and the short-term rental language has to match.
That is, that is the only possibility.
So it's gonna, if, if we don't approve the package, we're going to have to be careful as to where, how many times that shows up, basically, right?
So, that's 26, that's the home occupancy.
Yeah.
Uh, the next one is planning and development overlay, that is just strictly a language change. We've been doing it correctly, but this way, anybody that looks at it knows, if they're gonna put a petition in for planning and development, they've got to get it into us, even time and fashion or it does not have to be written past. Interesting thing about planning and development petition is, it doesn't stop anything, it just makes the level of approval, uh, higher. So instead of a majority of the council, it becomes four fifths of the council.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not a big change, but it does allow us to understand when that petition is required. Uh, 165.80 is a board of adjustment rule for potential, we don't, we haven't run into this issue, but some cities do. If there is a realtor or two on your board of adjustment, they are not allowed to be the majority of the votes on board of adjustment. So we're clarifying that, just to make sure everybody's aware of it as we make the appointments.
Hasn't come up though in the past, right?
It has not come up for us in the past. The last one is the land use matrix, and there are some changes in there in the footnotes that have to do with the, uh, Center Point Road developments. Uh, over the past number of years, I've been here 10 years, we've done quite a bit of development in the Center Point Road area. Um, we have not paid close attention to these, um, footnotes, that has been a matter of policy. Um, we look at the latest multifamily that went in on Hiawatha Road, that's in the Center Point Road District. In some respects, that would not apply because it's rental and not condoized. What we are discovering is that it is very difficult to regulate the ownership management or the ownership configuration within a multifamily. It could be anywhere from half condoized to half rental or all rental. Um, and quite frankly, what we're being told is it's discriminatory to try. So with that in mind, we went through a look at wherever rentals were designated in the CPR zone, and we're basically taking them out, we're maintaining the density requirements, we're maintaining the fact that you can't have it on the main floor for CPR 1, but we're taking out the rental designation in those, so that we don't run into that issue. It, as a matter of policy, has actually been modified. We've only had, in CPR zone, we've only had the one multifamily so far, but everybody else that has been asking, we never made it a point, we never made it an issue whether they were condoized or rental.
And if they were condo, they could be sublet.
Yeah.
So it seems like this might be a, was it a difference without a distinction or, right?
That, that, that's kind of where we ended up with Lisa, because we looked at, uh, Simron, and those were all condoized, but the, I don't know, Jim, do you know how many are rented out there? We have quite a number that have registered.
And it, it really does seem that it would be ripe for discrimination if, in fact, someone were to argue that the, the income levels to rent versus buy a condo means that de facto you are making it more difficult for lower-income folks to be able to live in these places. That seems like a, that seems like borrowing trouble, that really probably doesn't, I mean, with the price points of the, of the new developments, I don't see that that's going to really change the, the overall goal, which is that mixed use, right? Like the healthy neighborhoods to have a wide variety of opportunities, some of which are, have a lot more density to them, but you're, we're just letting the density carry the day, not the ownership.
We're, we're going to more of a, what does it look like, rather than how is it actually knit?
Right, who owns, yeah, it's, it's density versus ownership, if I'm understanding.
I get it, I know that there is, there is a difference between how a condo is being paid versus a rental.
Right.
But six mean under that land use matrix, family homes shall be dispersed throughout residential zones and districts, and shall not be located within contiguous city blocks. And that to me means, single-family homes can't be block to block.
Well, no, what it's talking about is the family home, which is actually defined licensure at the state.
So...
It's for group homes, special needs homes. What the state has said is you, you can't clump them all together in one spot.
Yeah.
And you can't make them be separated by a certain distance. They have to be located as randomly as a single-family home.
Okay.
And so we pulled the language right out of there, descriptive for whether it can be located.
You can't have a family home, a family home in blocks next to each other.
You can, as long as you don't have them all concentrated in one spot. So they can be next to each other now. Well, it's, it's, excuse me, two family homes in our present language cannot be located next to each other.
But if we had quarter apart, but this is districts, and family homes shall not be located within a contiguous city block.
So yes, that could be interpreted that way, if our direction is.
It's understood. Yes, you are.
For, for group homes, which we know, it, for the purpose of serving their needs, then random, single-family homes.
And then...
Ken?
So we, we, Jim, we took that language right out of there. Okay. All the applications for a high-rise are, are pretty big when it comes to the fire code, not, not just sprinkler system, which is now required in practically every moment, but the standpipe requirements, and yes, some city, uh, the hydraulics of the city system, along with the ladder truck. I don't know what a ladder truck, I know it can handle 55, but all the, but I don't know that it's the full 75.
And I, I assume we have that protection.
Yeah, usually, usually the break is at 75, where a city will be able to manage up to, but I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Good question.
So that, that is something that would have to go through, uh, planning and zoning and the council, because it is in a CPR zone. So it would come before us, uh, because it's CPR 1, and it would also come before us as part of the design guidelines. So all of those things would have to be addressed before anything would be approved. That's a good point. And they, and then remember, this is only in the CPR zones where that height would be allowed. Other than that, it's only in industrial zones where you build with 100, 150 plus.
I will say, though, I'm somewhat sympathetic to the plight of a builder who has to put an elevator in, right? The elevator is so expensive that I can see why wanting to get a return on a, on an investment of additional floor could go a long way.
Indeed.
Is it just industrial zones or the light industrial as well?
I believe the light industry has, uh, increased targets, and I'd have to make that up.
Well, they're just like that lot that they're building, the 55 and over, building on, if that were a state commercial, they're gonna have a four-story.
Yes, yes, they do.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
55, yeah. Almost they're gonna have it now with all the dirt they hold there.
I was surprised they didn't, because they have to put an elevator in, and why wouldn't you wanna get the rent from one more floor? It's gotta be, but anyway, we won't revisit that, we won't revisit that building, so...
I'm excited it's precluded that, it wouldn't have been able to match parking.
Right, 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 that's right, yes, good catch. So I'm, I'm sensing from the group that the sticking point in 165 is the 12 to 16 children. Is that an accurate read of the room? Do you want to, so Jim, Craig, and sensing that that's a big concern for you, is that a concern for others? Do we want to, is it bifurcate? Do we want to peel out that one paragraph?
So the motion would be to divide the question.
Okay.
And remove 165.25 for any...
I'm not sure I'd not vote for it, I'm just curious.
I, I think that the, what the order says is that we... I, I think that the point, the ordinance says, is that we gotta have somebody's court of feet to have it.
Yeah.
And that's gonna control this. I mean, if you like the houses we got here in Hiawatha, there's very few that wouldn't qualify for sixteen kids.
Do you think we could look that up? Do you think we could look that up? Like, is that something we could Google kind of fast to see if this is a state ordinance? That's a fair point, too.
They probably don't want any.
So I just think it's a lot, but I, I'm not.
Right, I do not have those to work in. I don't know that it's gonna be easy to find them.
Yeah, let me give it one college try here.
The state seat area in the whole of Iowa.
I, I, like I say, it's been, it's been a while since they passed theirs. And I did not know that they, in my, in my notes, I did not know that they did anything different than the state.
Well, we wanna look for protection, because we wanna help people with kids, so we have to balance that against neighbors. I'm a little more worried about traffic, but I do think what you said is right, I think the regulation size-wise is gonna limit it. We may not even be looking at that in Hiawatha.
Yeah, I can spread, but it's really a concern for me, uh, with a lot of children.
But if we maintain our lower thresholds, and we have to be prepared, prepared to regulate and uncover them and go do it. So if the city isn't equipped to do that, then we put ourselves into the, the offense of looking like we're regulating in a more stringent way, whether we have the ability to do it or not. And, and whether there's any benefit to go do that.
Well, that's a good question.
Say, I think I'm like, in rooms for.
Right.
Thirty-five feet of usable floor space per child.
Feet or square foot?
Five square feet. The, the program room size shall be a minimum of eighty square feet of usable floor space per.
The program, yep, eighty.
And provide thirty-five per child, okay. I, I can't swear that this is current, because this is just a Google search, but what I'm seeing, I Googled, I, this is an Iowa legislative website. And it says, physical facilities, room size, the program room size shall be a minimum of eighty square feet of usable floor space or sufficient floor space to provide thirty-five square feet of usable floor space per child.
But then it also says there, uh, if there's cribs counted, that it jumps up to forty square foot.
Yes.
Right, so usable floor space would presumably.
This is like a, a rec room, yeah.
On the floor as opposed to.
And it excludes kitchens, bathrooms, halls, lobby areas, storage areas, and other areas of the center not designed for activity space for children shall not be used as regular program space or counted as usable floor space. So if I'm reading this correctly, and even if we went, let's just say, let's just say thirty-five, that means you have to have a thirty-five hundred foot room to have ten kids.
Thirty-five hundred square.
Feet of, of rooms.
I thought it was thirty-five square.
Thirty-five times sixteen, forty times sixteen is only six hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, you added a zero.
I added a zero, okay.
Six hundred and forty.
And I teach math, that's terrible. Now you're afraid to take a class for me.
Twenty, twenty by twenty room is four square feet, and twenty by thirty room is six hundred square feet.
So if we have eighty, so if we have.
Five hundred and sixty.
Eighty, so if we have, so if we do need eighty, eighty square, okay, but if this says the program room size shall be eighty square feet of usable floor space per child.
And it's the open space, not inclusive of the bedroom, the bathrooms and everything.
You said eighty per child?
Now, it, yeah, so, well, there's three numbers in this thing, it says eighty, and then it says thirty-five, and then it says if there's a crib, it's forty. So.
I mean by usable space versus.
And I think usable space could be, usable space could be a bedroom, but it cannot be a kitchen, bathroom, hall, lobby, storage area, or other area not designated for daycare. So I'm, I'm thinking that this could be a, like, let's say you have a big living room upstairs, and you have a bedroom, and then you have a, a finished basement. So what, what kind of square, so if we went with, something's easier math for me, so if we went with forty square feet, the question is, is it eighty or is it thirty-five? If you go with eighty, and you have ten kids, you have eight hundred square feet. And if you have six more kids, you add another four hundred and eighty, so you're at twelve eighty.
Correct.
And so twelve eighty would look like, uh, ten by.
Well, my rambler raised my children's end with eleven hundred square feet per floor.
For everything, though.
Per floor.
Yeah.
That's when I finished off the basement, then I had twenty-two hundred.
Okay, so it, it, it is doable, but it also now, though, it kind of seems to me that if you were doing it with twelve, right? Like.
You would think that a basement, as long as it didn't have the egress windows, it wouldn't be legal.
Right, but it could be a walkout.
There, there again, that's.
Could be a walkout.
That's part of the licensure requirement, right? So the spaces would have to be all the way.
Right, right.
Do you, so I know on the other part of it, it talked about, um, the businesses not having to have core plans, but would that include this, or because of the licensing part, they have to have it?
Or they have to get a license with the state, and I don't know what the requirements are for giving that license. Other than everything that's on the sheet, they have to prove the, their certifications of their education and the number of people. I don't know what the building licensure is, and I'm not sure that we even do it with our own fire department. I think we have the state do the licensure alone, for daycares. At this point, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think we've ever taken that on. So I don't know all of the requirements, I do know that there are regressment requirements and smoke alarm requirements. Fire extinguisher requirement.
Do we have any idea how many twelve child in-home daycares there are in Hiawatha, Iowa?
We know that we have at least one.
Okay, so we're not talking about thirty?
We, we know of three that actually have gotten conditional uses. And we know of two more that were in place before any rules came into being. So that's a total of, uh, I think that's five daycares in Iowa, that's probably pretty accurate.
Yeah, and so in some ways, there's two potentials here for disruption to their neighbors. One is that they all expand and the drop-off traffic increases. But that means, according to what we think is going on here, if we take forty times four extra children, that means that they have to have an extra hundred and sixty square feet that they, so, okay, that's probably not all that big, right? Or that now the opportunity to have sixteen children in your house at one time is so attractive that someone with a large finished walkout basement immediately says, well, I wasn't in for twelve, but sign me up for sixteen. I just don't, I just don't see that as being, I don't, honestly, I don't want to live next to a daycare with sixteen children, or twelve, or, you know, three, depending on who they are. But it, it, that strikes me as that's, uh, that, that worry is probably not a Hiawatha Iowa worry. It's really probably more about, well, those who are serving twelve bump up to sixteen because they need the square footage requirements, and then does it create just that tipping point of traffic where there are complaints? Is that fair? That's my guess.
That certainly is a way to look at it.
Is there any geographic limitation to sixteen-member daycare, like family homes?
There is not, there is nothing that says it can't be right next to each other.
But is a sixteen person need a conditional use, so that could be a consideration?
It's, it's not a, it's not a, it is very close to what we call a conditional use, and we certainly, I mean, we certainly could look at that as part of the conditional.
Have three of those on the same block.
Right, I mean. Yeah.
I don't think you're gonna have straight weather, a lot of things.
Well, it's kind of odd.
I think that's what I discussed, we can do a model.
Okay, are we?
Personally.
Yes, in my, my opinion.
Okay, are we, so are we comfortable, let me get nodding heads, are we comfortable, um, having a vote, a roll call vote on the entire package? We are in one sixty-five, and, and we will not.
I have one question, whatever it changed from automobile to vehicles, would that include?
Uh, we expanded the prohibition for mechanic shops in residential zones. It used to just say automobiles, so if you were fixing boats, technically could do that in a residential zone. Now we put vehicles in there, that's all included. So we're trying to keep them entirely out of residential, so that's what that language changes. So that's more restricted than once.
And that's for commercial purposes, right? Not, I'm tinkering in my driveway.
Right, you can still put your vehicle in the garage. As long as it's in the garage, you don't.
Further. Aye.
Kenny Jones.
Aye.
Jim Langmo.
Aye.
Jessica Bullerman.
Aye.
Jim Craig.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. On to D, consider resolution for recommendation to city council to approve an ordinance amending the city sign code chapter one. This is shorter, right?
This is much shorter. This one we just got.
End of this particular chat, I forgot, before we grilled Pat to ask for the motion to approve, so let's grab that motion to approve.
Absolutely.
Okay, Kenny is a first, and Jim Craig is a second, thank you, all right. So Pat, thank you for sharing that information with us, questions for Pat about the sign code language?
Sure, everything that's up.
Yes, that's right.
And the materials that you talked about, where it says match design guidelines, that's like the style of the, the design?
Right, especially if they're in the design guideline areas, if the subdivision is not in the design guideline area, it could be a little more, there's a little more variety. However, it will reflect the subdivision design. I don't know how to explain that, other than if you look at Turtle Creek, and they use the stone monument, or you look at Edgewood Village, they put together a nice block and masonry structure that.
I think Wolf Creek is wood.
Wolf Creek is a wood.
Mine is sitting in an island, the condo association is, is stone.
Yeah, yeah. So those are the ones that we saw, we went out, looked to see how many, where we do, we don't have any real commercial ones, other than the signs in the development on Longfellow, are, are, they keep a standard red roof, which is kind of cool, but it doesn't really allow for subdivision sign. But I can see, I don't think we have a Longfellow subdivision sign.
No, we have a signing job there, but it's not a subdivision.
All right, are we comfortable with roll call and vote? Home stretch, folks, home stretch.
Kenny Jones.
Aye.
Jessica Bullerman.
Aye.
Lisa Jepson.
Aye.
Jim Craig.
Aye.
Jim Langmo.
Aye.
I am so excited to call for the motion to adjourn. I think we should let our newest member, this is a little bit of a tradition we started, our newest member gets to make the first motion to adjourn, your first meeting, you've made it.
To adjourn.
All right, woo-hoo, and a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
You did good, good job.
It's all good, it's all good.
Don't you think we should tell her this is one of the easy ones?
Yeah, this was not a public meeting, like, that's, wasn't, wasn't Sherry's first meeting a public meeting?
Yes.
And it was like full.
Controversial one.
And a little bit spicy, and she leans over, I'm like, it's not always like this, so, all in favor, guys, say your ayes, all in favor, aye. All right, thank you, we are adjourned.
I got a condo meeting.